She came to my house one time.
It's fine, that's just garbage. That doesn't mean that you want to do it. I don't want you to...
Because by your seats will start beading in about one minute. And I encourage you, if you haven't already, to register the checklist.
Yes, we can't hear you. Ooh, I can't get out of this. I can't get out of my seat. Get rid of my trash.
If you're just coming in, please check in with the register checklist. Over along this room here.
I don't know if I see her. Yeah, I don't see anybody here that looks like that.
Seriously, though, I mean, heal these attacks.
Some of them do.
Voice, you know?
Is anybody who hasn't checked in for the superpowers at the checklist from their town, please do so now. Well, welcome to the 2025 deliberative session of Pembroke Regional School District. My name is Quentin Blaine, I'm the moderator for the district. And we've opened our meeting with a pledge of allegiance as a flag on the wall. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For not registered, well, not checked in, but not registered voters in the Pembroke Regional School District, everybody here is a registered voter? Well, this is, the purpose of this meeting is to review the warrant articles that have been ruled by the school board, we can then discuss, comment, ask questions, propose amendment, and propose amendments to the article. The meeting will vote only on proposed amendments, it will not, if any. Voting on the articles themselves will take place at the polls on March 14 at individual towns. March 11? Well, yeah, that says 2023. Thank you. In each town on election day. If you want to speak, please stand up to the microphone and approach the microphone, and once I recognize you, give your name and town of residence, and then make the question or point that you want to make. And so I will read, I will read each article, and then I will ask if there's any comments from the school board members, and then feel free to ask questions to them about the articles. Article one is to negotiate and execute tuition contracts, to see if the school district will vote to authorize the school board to negotiate and execute such tuition contracts as the board may determine applicable for students inside or outside the Pembroke Regional School District. The board recommends this article.
Remove the article.
And are there any comments from the board on this particular article?
In a second, yeah.
I don't think we need to move in second, I know I usually go through that, but I don't think this year we really, because we can't, we can't vote on these, but they're on the floor, so can they move in second and then be on the floor too? Any comments on the article?
I don't have a comment, but I've got all these papers around.
Article one, the talk of the warrant. Well, seeing that there's no input on article one, it will appear on the ballot as written. Article two is support staff collective bargaining agreement, to see if the school district will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the school board and the Plymouth Regional Educational Support Staff, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits to the current staffing level. Fiscal year 2026, estimated increase is $109,912. For the year, fiscal year 2026 to 2027, the estimated increase is $70,810. For fiscal year 2027, 2028, the estimated increase is $71,605. And for fiscal year 2028 to 2029, the estimated increase is $74,243. And further, to raise and appropriate $109,912 for the current fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels, the board recommends this article.
Don't make that motion.
Okay, it's been moved, put it on the floor.
No.
It's on the floor, it's open for discussion, does anybody have any questions or comments about it? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name, your town.
Veronica Barton, Thornton, New Hampshire. Turn that light on.
On the front.
Right on the top. Veronica Barton, Thornton, New Hampshire.
Thanks.
Just one clarification, you said the board recommends this article, but we have here, it does not say that on this copy. It just says recommendations required.
Okay, anybody explain that, is that an earlier draft?
It could be an earlier draft left over from the hearing, but there on the official warrant, it says that.
Yeah, you might copy wrong.
Perfect. We worked very hard with all of you, and I greatly appreciate that, so I'll make sure that's right.
Are there any other questions, comments, Amy?
Yeah, Amy Lee, from Plymouth, I have a question about, so the fiscal year 109, 912, and then you're going to raise another 109, 912, twice?
So if you want to answer that, maybe into the microphone.
I'll try and speak, can everyone hear me? So that's statutory language wording of the article, but the 109 is raised once for next year, and the subsequent years are the other numbers that are on there, each time raised once.
Okay, if there's no further comments or questions, then Article two will appear on the ballot as written. Which brings us to Article three, install lights on athletic fields, to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $748,998 for the purpose of purchasing and installing lighting for Zulia's Field Football and the combined soccer lacrosse athletic fields, the school board recommends this article. There's an explanation with it, I will read that also. It is the intent of the board to engage in fundraising efforts to include sponsorships and advertising within the Atlantic complex to minimize athletic complex, to minimize the amount needed to be raised by through taxation. Upon passage of this article, the district will implement a live tally of the fundraising balance towards the project on the website of Plymouth Regional High School. You have a question, sir?
I would like to make a comment.
Sure, please say your name and town.
My name is Philip McCormick, I reside in Holmes, and I would like to speak in opposition to this article, and at this point not ready to make any type of amendment, but I'd like to speak to it as it's on the floor. First of all, I've consistently been saying that I view this as a want versus a need, and if I look at the marketing information that has been provided, I think that is more of a rationalization than a justification, and then that concerns me. And I base that on the following. One of the marketing statements deals with the emergency gathering point. I can't think of a situation where community members, especially from the seven communities, would want to meet at night outdoors on the football field. You think, try to think of what type of an emergency would it be, it might be tornado, hurricane, the last place you want to be is out on the football field. And I would think they would rather be in a gymnasium, possibly the National Guard Building, someplace that's sheltered against the weather. We often talk about the inability of freshmen in JV games to be played. In football, this past year's schedule showed only two other teams in our division that had freshman football, they were Manchester West and Cannon, and we played them home and away, so we had two home games, which, and one of them happened to be in September, and they can be scheduled at a point before we start losing the daylight hours. JV games, they go, they're usually a nine-game schedule, five home one year, four home the next, usually ends by the last week in October, or the first Monday in November, and then, I mean, you still don't have an issue with daylight hours in most instances in that situation. Expanded community use was another marketing statement. To me, that almost sounds like build it and they will come. At the budget hearing, the board was asked, what would that look like? And there really wasn't an answer given to that, what it might be used, what you'd be using nightlights for. They speak to an economic boost, well, I don't know as though you're going to get that many more people in Plymouth to watch a night game than you would a day game on a Saturday afternoon looking over probably one of the most beautiful scenic views in the state of New Hampshire. On a side note, playing on a Friday night, there's been some discussion that we don't have enough time for practices now, if you play on a Friday night, you actually lose a day of practice. I was involved with the program for several decades, and Friday was devoted to the final game preparations where you come up on the field, if you're not doing that on Friday, you're doing it on Thursday, so therefore you lose one of your days of practice. Another reason I'm in opposition are the costs. I think Mr. Rossner and the board and the administration has done a fine job getting information out there as to what it's going to cost, with the anticipated increases in kind of special ed to local school districts, educational freedom accounts with the voucher system, I think school districts are going to be having to face much more costly expenditures than what they have in the past. I think it's the board's and the administration's responsibility to act in a fiduciary role that uses taxpayers' money wisely and efficiently. Spending it on a want rather than need does not sit well with me. I think all of us know what's happening with costs of everything, a number of people having a very difficult time making ends meet. If you look at the information Mr. Rossner provided, you'll see the tax impact on every hundred thousand dollars of your home's value debt. It, that is only for the lights, for example, I think the town of Plymouth is $24.48 per hundred thousand. Other towns were 16 plus, 17 plus, the only one basically was holding us where I reside, and that was under $10, the only one. But this is on top of what the regular budget will be, and all of us in our towns have an elementary school, so this rate will be on top of what the elementary budgets will look like and the impacts that that will have on taxes. One last note, I'm not anti athletics, those of you who know me know that I've been involved in Plymouth sports as a student athlete, principal, and coach for over 40 years, I support athletics. But remember, if the lights are not supported, that doesn't mean our kids won't play, they will still be able to play and still have the support of the district and our communities. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You're welcome. Is there any response or comments back from any members of the board? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Chris Sammorn from Plymouth, a taxpayer. I just want to talk about a couple of things in support of the lighting project that we talked about. For those of you that have been at a lot of meetings we've had, we've talked about the need for lights. I think that's been pretty clear. This day and age with the busing issues, the limitations on games. I know Phil did mention the freshman schedule. I'm not sure where you got that from. We had eight freshman games played this season, and that was a scramble because we're constantly losing games because teams can't get buses, so we're playing late. The other thing I mentioned, talking about fans at games, we did host two Friday night games under portable lights. And we had huge crowds. And I've been here 25 years, 26 years coach, and I played here. And those are the biggest crowds I'd ever seen here by far. The other thing, we can't play under portable lights if people are asking that. It has to be agreed upon by your opponents. And our opponents have said they would not do that. It's not the best conducive lighting for safety, so they wouldn't want to do that. So there's a lot of need, and we talked about the need on the soccer fields as well, with the JV soccer not being able to play games and finish their games. And I think the need out there, we've gone over quite a bit. The other thing I did want to mention, because there is some miscommunication out there, and I know people talk about taxes. The high end of this is 24 cents per hundred thousand, per thousand, and 13 cents on the low end. So if your house is valued at $300,000, that's a payment of $39 on the low end on $72 on the high end. And keep in mind, different than most budget items, this is a one-time thing. This isn't something that pops up again next year, year after. It's a one-time payment. We have also been working to fundraise to offset that cost. And then the other thing that has come up a little bit is the electricity. And we've got the electricity bill is a $9 for a four-hour segment. So say a game is soccer, football game is four hours, it's a $9 payment. These LED lights, the electricity is not an issue, just to make sure people are clear and have those, that information. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions about the article?
Ted Wisneski, Plymouth. The one thing I would request is that the article be amended to include the tax impact for each town in the article itself, somewhat to the word, how upon it does.
My question is, are the proposed field lights within the guidelines of existing zoning ordinances? And is there some kind of environmental impact that we should probably consider?
Liza, can you speak to that?
Yes, is there somebody?
Yeah, well, that's our facilities manager.
Liza Taylor, facilities manager. Can everyone hear me? All right. I think everyone can hear me all right.
You can use that one.
You can use it.
Come right up, Liza. I know you love that.
Oh, yeah, I'm pretty excited about it. So the first question was about, I believe, the town and the zone and all of that. Early on in this, we actually reached out to the town manager, Scott Whedon, and we are all set there. It doesn't break any zones that we already have in place. The other thing is these particular LED lights, what most people are used to are the old halide lights. There was a lot of overcasting, overshadowing, where that light just carried better ones that have that, because that was definitely a concern for us because years passed, that